Good evening. Welcome. I'd like to bring this open this meeting of the Tacoma Public School Board of Directors for Thursday, October 26, 2023, to order. Will you please rise and join me in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tacoma Public Schools acknowledges that we are on the traditional ancestral and historical lands of the Pu'alap tribe of Indians. We honor with gratitude the tribe itself and the land itself and the Pu'alap tribe. This acknowledgement serves as a first step in honoring our nearest tribal neighbors and partners who have inhabited this region since time immemorial and to whom we give thanks for allowing us passage to their lands. We shall intentionally create inclusive and respectful partnerships that honor indigenous cultures, histories, identities, and socio-political realities. General Counsel Ben Roach, would you please read the roll?
President Bumbright.
Here.
Vice President Shurman.
Here.
Director Keating.
Very well done.
We have a quorum.
Thank you so much. Okay, moving on to item number five, adoption of the agenda.
I'm moved to adopt.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments, questions? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Passes three to zero. Moving on to item number six, recognition of staff, students, and community. Superintendent, I will turn this over to you.
It is my pleasure and honor to introduce the world's greatest partnership director, Amanda Scott Thomas.
Thank you, thank you Superintendent. I can't with y'all. Hello. Good evening to Board of Directors, our beloved community. It's my pleasure to be here. Amanda Scott Thomas, again Director of the Community Partnership Office. And as we do monthly, we want to recognize a community partner that has made a difference. So, as you all know, Tacoma Public Schools provides divides partnership as a cooperative relationship between students, families, schools, and the school district, and the greater Tacoma community. We say that partners, and we know that partners are committed to supporting student academic success and the whole child. Partners work with and invest in the education of our children and youth whose future in turn will affect the entire quality of life for the entire Tacoma community. When it comes to school, to student success, Tacoma Public Schools recognizes that schools cannot do it alone. And in a recognition of an investment of time, talent, and resources for TPS students, families, and staff, the Shining Star Community Partner Award signifies an honor and thanks to a community partner who has made a difference by doing what's best for kids. For your consideration tonight, Degrees of Change, often known by their ACT VI program, which is a premier college support program in the Pacific Northwest, Tacoma Public Schools students have been supported by ACT VI for over 20 years. And this year, we entered a new partnership that will serve our school system and community for decades to come. It's called the Seed Teachers. Seed Teachers is a partnership between Degrees of Change, Pacific Lutheran University, and Tacoma Public Schools in which 20 students per year will enroll at PLU with a plan to become teachers with the objective to find work here in our Tacoma Public Schools. This gives us an explicit pipeline for future teachers who better represent our student population. To guarantee success, Degrees of Change staff has a staff mentor who works directly with the students at PLU to make sure that they stay on track and receive the support they need to graduate and become teachers. While the program, the students will serve our, while in the program, the students will serve our schools by working after school in tutoring and coaching roles and fill halftime positions as education support professionals. From start to finish, this program supports our students, supports our schools, and sets us up with excellent homegrown teachers for the future. That's a win-win for everybody. So it is with the recommendation of the Community Partnership Office that the Board of Directors recognizes Degrees of Change as being awarded the Shining Star Community Partner Award for the month of October. Can we give them a hand?
Absolutely.
At this time, I'm going to invite up Pat Irwin to come and introduce to you all the CEO of Degrees of Change to accept the award. So come on up, gentlemen.
Do you want to hang on to that?
I can hang on to it, yes.
Thank you, you're a much better presenter than I am, so you'll do it with a bit more flair. I have the best job because I work with amazing people. And one of those amazing people is Marquise Dixon, who is the CEO of Degrees of Change. And one of the things that they say at Degrees of Change, again also known as ACT VI, is they get kids to and through college. And one of the things that we do in high schools is we get kids to college, but unless we partner with agencies like Degrees of Change that have people to mentor people through the process, they don't often get through college. So they have a success rate of around 84% of their students graduating in five years, which is remarkable. We partnered with them, along with PLU, to get our students through PLU to become teachers and come back to Tacoma and work for our kids. So without further ado, I'm going to introduce Marquise Dixon, and let's give him a round of applause.
Good evening, Directors, good evening, community partners. I'm extremely grateful for opportunity to stand and represent Degrees of Change for our longstanding partnership with Tacoma Public Schools. Over 21 years, we've been working with you all to identify emerging homegrown leaders to be able to center their voices, knowing that they have a front row seat to better solve the inequities and injustices facing our communities. I'm grateful for opportunity not only to talk about ACT VI, but our internship program. We partner with Tacoma Public Schools as well on our Tacoma Pipeline, professional pipeline, knowing that we're trying to make a seamless pathway for students from the community of Tacoma to be able to get career readiness. But also Seed Teachers, which we're excited to be able to send 20 students from Tacoma Public Schools back into their home communities. And I'm joined here tonight by my son, who's also a Tacoma Public School student as well. He attends Sherman Elementary with his also two younger siblings as well. We're extremely grateful for our partnership with Tacoma Public Schools. So thank you all so much for this award. We're extremely grateful and humbled by it.
Well, thank you. Thank, yep, come on up, and we can come up and get a photo.
Marquise, if you have any other staff members to join you, you're more than welcome to, we can take a picture. And Mr. Irwin, would you be so kind to join them up on stage too as you're a significant member of this partnership? Yes.
Okay, well, do you want to take a photo, or do you want to come up?
No, I think photos are so important.
Gracious, very gracious.
I just want to thank Degrees of Change and all the staff for all the work that they've done, all these 21 years with Tacoma Public Schools. And I also want to say that I love that the relationship that we've built has been spreading throughout the community in other ways. And I know that we've, through JMAC, the Joint Municipal Action Committee, we have been working with Degrees of Change on our apprenticeship program, and we've encouraged and introduced them and gathered more support for the program for other, from other government bodies in the area because they've been recognized as having made such an impact on our kids and our community. And it works in, for not just, you know, getting kids involved in things that can help them get through college and beyond, but also it's community wealth building in a very meaningful way and very practical. So thank you, Marquise, and also to all the team at Degrees of Change. We're very proud to have you as a partner. All right. Right now, we have a full quorum. All right, so just in time to go on to item number 7.2, which is the introduction of our Student Board Representatives for 2023-24.
Madam President, may we do 7.1?
Oh, do, yeah, I guess we could do that.
That would be.
I got so excited.
Yes, both are extremely exciting topics, and so.
So let's do 7.1 first.
I'd like to introduce Dr. Forrest Skreek, and he has a wonderful opportunity tonight to acknowledge and honor some of our amazing team members.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you, Dr. Garcia, and members of the board, for giving me the honor of presenting to you the whole educator board recognition for the month of October. And this time, we are proud to celebrate our principals. As you know, principals play a pivotal role in the leadership of our schools, ensuring the efficient functioning and overall success of the school community. They are instrumental in supporting both our staff and students on their educational journey. Today, we want to take a moment to acknowledge the incredible work that they do. In particular, we'd like to spotlight a few individuals from our remarkable team of principals who joined us here today. You can go ahead and stand if you'd like. Monte Carter, First Creek Middle School, Lisa Gibbs, Travis Elementary School, Tim Harris, Lister Elementary School, Kim Hildebrandt, Roosevelt Elementary School, Annie Mosic, Stafford Elementary School, Jana Perkins, Jefferson Elementary School, and Maura Tui, Franklin Elementary School. These seven individuals are all first-year principals, but they bring a wealth of experience to their roles. And it's really noteworthy that each of them has previously served as an assistant principal within Tacoma Public Schools, demonstrating obviously their dedication to professional growth and the betterment of our school district. We extend our sincere congratulations to all our principals for the exceptional dedication and hard work in leading our schools toward success. Their contributions are a testament to the strength of our educational community, so thank you to all of our principals. Go ahead and raise, I think we have a few others here, too.
Yeah, all of them. We cannot say enough in gratitude to our principals who keep the engines running at every single one of our schools. And I know it's a long job, it's a tough job, and every single one of us up here, I know, appreciate you all for the kindness that you show our students, the direction you provide to the staff, and the wisdom and the vision and all of it. And we're proud to be part of your team. Anyone have anything else you want to say? So, and I don't know if you guys wanted to come up and get a picture, or if you, you're good. You want to come up? Yeah, they're coming up, they're coming up.
Forrest, get a picture.
Forrest is like.
Pictures.
I promise every time I will put them on the spot.
Yes, Forrest Skreek, would you join them up there in honoring? Monte, what was the score this afternoon?
Oh, boy, oh, boy.
Try to release that, that smile, Monte.
All right, now we will move on to 7.2. Superintendent?
It is our honor to introduce some new members of your team and our team. Mr. Neal, will you join us?
He's busy talking.
He is.
Whoa, just like calling people out there, President.
I assure you that Mr. Neal is doing school district business.
I'm sure he was, absolutely, he always is.
Good evening, Board members. My name is James Neal, I'm the Director of Athletics and Activities, and I have the excellent opportunity this evening to share and introduce two of our new student school board reps, and then one of our existing student school board reps. And so I'm going to actually ask them up one at a time to come up and introduce themselves. We do have a slide with their information up on them, so as we pull up the next slide, we have Amanda Peterson.
Yay, Amanda.
And she's going to come up and introduce herself.
Hi, good evening, everyone. It's great to be back. My name is Amanda Peterson. This is my second year here with the school board, but my first year as an official student board rep. I am a senior at Lincoln High School, and I'm also serving my second year as ASB Executive Board President and Philippine Student Union President. Also, on the behalf of our other school board rep who couldn't make it today, Zelicia DeLeon, she wasn't able to make it, but she wanted me to relay the message that, she wanted to say, "Good evening, everyone. My name is Zelicia DeLeon. This is my second year as school board representative. I apologize for not being able to make it this meeting, but trust me, I'll be at other meetings." A little bit about me, I've been in ASB for all four years, and I participate in ASB in various sports. She also goes to Lincoln High School. Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. Look forward to hearing from you later.
All right, and next, we have, Zelicia was not unable to make it, we have Lillian Taylor.
Hi, good evening. My name's Lillian Taylor. I am a junior at Silas High School. I have not been in ASB, but I am a huge, I have a huge role in my choir and theater program. I am our jazz choir president and our choir program treasurer, and I hope to help advocate for our students. Thank you.
Looking forward to hearing from you.
Lastly, we have Amelia Constantine.
Hi, my name is Amelia Constantine. Currently, I am representing SOTA, and it's my second year in ASB, but my first year as an alternating member in the school board. And my freshman year, I was freshman representative, and this year, I'm serving as public relations. And currently, I'm in prom committee, I'm assistant stage manager for the theater community of SOTA, and during the summer, I served as a camp counselor first, children, because I love working with children. And I'm very passionate about advocating for students and helping students feel heard in relaying information that they want to be presented. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time again. And we did a short orientation this evening and had the opportunity to share kind of their role, and they're really excited to participate in this process. And I'm sure you'll have emails, both to the school board and our superintendents, as they develop their own leadership and ask questions and learn. So thank you again.
Thank you. And welcome, welcome all of you. It is going to be an exciting year, and we're looking forward to your input in helping us hear from the students. So thank you very much. All right.
Madam President, I just wanted, lots of great ways to start. I've been in a couple of conversations today where, and then obviously almost every day, where you start to realize that our world is not just full of celebrations. And I want to thank our staff, I want to thank our students, and I want to thank our The land acknowledgement has been read, I think, three different meetings that I've been a part of, and the last sentence continues to make me pause. "We shall intentionally create inclusive and respectful partnerships that honor, in this situation, indigenous cultures, histories, identities, and socio-political realities." The world is, especially in this last three weeks, I think sometimes you have flashpoints. Our staff have to sometimes put their lives on hold so that they can create a space for sometimes our students. It's not lost on me how difficult that can be. I know that our students put their lives on hold sometimes to be in a classroom. And I know you do as well. And so as we wrap up October, I just want to take a moment to pause and remind us all to try to see each other, including myself, to try to create that space that does recognize and honors different cultures, histories, identities, and socio-political realities without judgment, to work to be that place where hate is not allowed. And I know it's not just, let's do it, it's something we have to live towards and every day. And so I know our cabinet, and I know you, and I know our staff, from our crossing guards to our classroom teachers, to our bus drivers, to our safety and security, and nutrition service, and custodial, and maintenance, are all working through that. It happens through our equity conversations, it happens in our daily work, and it's not easy. It's not easy to sometimes pause, knowing that you, as an individual, are dealing with really significant and traumatic experiences. I'm hopeful, I'm hopeful that we can operate as a team to try to continue to create those spaces for our kids and each other as we move forward. And I just want to let folks know that I know we're all committed to making sure that hate does not have a place here. We haven't arrived, but we will be relentless in that pursuit. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to item number eight, staff report to the board. 8.1, annual benchmark report, annual safety discipline.
So if you're new, or you are watching a board member for the first time, I'll give you a little bit of a history. In 2020, the Board of Directors, you folks established a strategic plan. And within that strategic plan, you established benchmarks, goals that we would work to, and you had established priority benchmarks. And so you have a number of benchmarks, we report those online. And then twice a year, through a monitoring report and an end-of-the-year report, you have asked the staff to come back to you and say, "How have we done in relation to those? What did you learn from those experiences? And what are we going to do differently to be better in that?" One of your strategic plans, and you went through a tremendous community input process, called it the accordion process. What do you think about this? What do you think about this? To determine whether that, to hear from community. One of those goals is around student safety and the essence of how are students safe in relation to exclusionary discipline practices? So tonight, we have Laura Allen, Director of Whole Child, and Ms. Toni Pace, our Assistant Superintendent of K-12 Support, to share with you our recent report. Ms. Pace.
Thank you, Dr. Garcia. As Dr. Garcia so eloquently said, tonight, we are here to present the annual benchmark report on safety in their specific area of discipline. Just to remind you what the goal is all about, it's goal number four, it's titled Health and Safety. All schools will create and maintain safe learning environments that promote academic The first bit of data that we have to share with you is a priority benchmark from discipline for students in grades three and five, and these are showing the percentage of students with no exclusionary discipline. You can see there are four years represented here. Grade three is in yellow, grade five is in blue. Our third grade goal at the district level is 97% of our students would have no exclusionary discipline, and at the fifth grade, goal would be 96% of our students would not have exclusionary discipline. In year 2023, which is last year, both third grade and fifth grade met the goal. The year before that, in 2021, third grade met, but fifth grade missed it by a little bit. In 2021, third grade met the goal, and so did the fifth grade. That was the year of our COVID experience, I guess I could say, where we were remote from September through February, and we were hybrid from March through June, so that's why those percentages look the way they do. And then in 2020, third grade met the goal, and so did fifth grade. So now I'm going to turn this over to Laura Allen, who is the heart and soul of the Whole Child, to take us a little bit deeper into the data that we have for you tonight, and to look at some next steps as well. Laura, are you ready?
Good evening, thank you, Dr. Pace. Okay, there's a lot of data on this slide. And what we do is while we met the goals as an aggregate for the grade levels, we want to take a look and make sure that we're serving students equitably. So here, we disaggregate the data by student group. And you'll see 13 different student groups, and we look at that data. Now, we have two tables here. The one that you see in gray, those numbers will be the same on every one of these slides. Those are the total number of students in that student group throughout the district. There's also a percentage, and that's the percentage that that student group makes of our entire district. Okay, in the blue, now this is our discipline data. The first two columns, 2019, 2021, those were some years that were impacted as we were learning remotely for part of those years. At the very end, you'll see a column that says change. That change is the difference between last year, 2223, and the year prior, 2122. We were fully in school both of those years. We want to see large numbers. That means that more students went through the year without a suspension or expulsion, and we want to see a positive change. Those are good things. For third grade, 11 of the 13 student groups met the district goal. Our black students and our students in special education did not. We see that that continues now when we look at fifth grade. So we have some equity work to do in these areas. So for fifth grade as a whole, while we met the district benchmark, eight of the 13 student groups met it, while others did not. In the appendix, we also offer disaggregated and total data for secondary schools, or secondary grades. In all of the grade levels, you'll see that every single one met or exceeded the district benchmark. I have to stop and pause on that, because as Superintendent Garcia was sharing, this is a challenging world. We see wars, we see too much crime in our community, and that impacts students, it impacts their families, it impacts our educators. And for every grade level to meet or exceed the district benchmark, for them, that means that educators are passionately and wholeheartedly creating learning environments where they're keeping kids in school, where they're giving them every shot at success, where they're helping them learn, helping them build relationships, helping them feel safe. We have, a lot of the principal champions are here in the audience tonight, and it is not an accident to meet that goal. That's a lot of wholehearted hard work that went into meeting those goals. So it is a celebration. So where do we go from here? Again, we do have equity gaps that we must close. I did look back in years prior, before any of us had ever even had COVID as a word in our vocabulary, and we have closed equity gaps, some by as much as 40%. So the trajectory is good, but we'll be relentless so that we provide equity to all students. We have a work group that has been created, it's captained by Dr. Toni Pace, supported by Dr. Lisa Nolan, and it brings together department heads to create district-wide protocols. We've involved stakeholders throughout the process in making sure that we align these protocols to our Whole Child values. When possible, there are times where we have to exclude. When possible, there are times where we have to exclude. There's even times under the law. But when possible, we want to be instructional, restorative, and reflective, to give students, you know, kids are going to make mistakes. As adults, we make mistakes. I personally have recently made mistakes that I've had to amend for. So when possible, we want to keep kids learning and do it in a way that teaches, just as we would a skill in math or in reading. All staff are required to complete monthly equity questions plus seven hours of equity professional learning. This goes to closing those equity gaps. I'm going to skip over the next one. I'll come back, but the two are connected. As part of the continuous achievement process, schools will analyze discipline data to determine and address any disparities. What that means is this. Our Washington State requires that each school gathers their staff, looks at discipline data, breaks it down by student group, looks for gaps, creates a plan for continuous improvement. That's part of our CAP plan. And that's a process called a root cause analysis. So we will continue to do that work. Back in the center there, all administrators attended a student facilitated Tier One restorative practices training at Admin Institute. And let me tell you, these students were phenomenal. The feedback we got was through the roof. They were, they're just brilliant and wise and knowledgeable and engaging and charismatic, and they were the leaders of the instruction. We also offered in September a six-hour PD that was open to all staff on restorative practices. It's not up there, but we're additionally through a grant from City of Tacoma, targeting some schools with added restorative supports. And then as we go down, too, from the bottom, our social-emotional learning curriculum is a chance to be proactive, where students have a chance to build skills for social, emotional, and academic success. You know, the number one skill kids said they needed socially, emotionally, was conflict resolution. And so these skills help kids not only develop healthy relationships, but keep them and maintain those relationships. And then finally, we have grant funding for advanced tier supports for students struggling with depression, with anxiety, trauma, social skills. And I should also say, we have a grant for attendance and re-engagement. So we want to get at some of those core reasons that drive, can drive behavior, and really help kids in every way that we can. Thank you.
Thank you for that very thorough report. Appreciate both of you. Does anyone here have any questions for either Dr. Pace, Dr. Pace, or Laura Allen?
Yeah, I do. Actually, I was looking through the, actually, the sixth, eighth, sixth grade, eighth grade, and then also the 12th grade data. And I was curious about, and I don't necessarily expect you to have an answer to this, but a wonder I had about the non-conforming students who are identified as gender X. I was curious about there being a pretty significant increase in expulsion and suspicion for sixth graders. And it made me wonder about misgendering and the impacts that misgendering can have, and then how that behavior can sometimes escalate as a result of that. So I was curious, I know that's a pretty specific and detailed question, so I just, and if you don't have that, I don't expect you to have a response, but it's just a consideration that I had.
I absolutely agree with you, and that's an area that we continue to grow in. I will say that for some of our student groups, they're very small. Those numbers are district-wide, and so for a particular grade level, one student being suspended or not being suspended can swing the data in large percentages.
Sure.
My observation is, is the team is focused really in on middle school right now, and unpacking what are the supports in place? Who's the partners? What can we look at? And so, that's an area of focus. It's a, it's a difficult time in a child's life. And, you know, you folks that have middle schoolers or work directly with middle schoolers, I was in a, a, a good conversation with Project Peace this afternoon, and how we can support and work together around exclusionary discipline. And it was, it was impactful for me to hear our community partners recognize that kids will make mistakes. And sometimes those mistakes may cause them, by law, to be outside of school and excluded. And so how can we, especially at that age, partner together? And the need for additional adults to be a different voice sometimes than just the school in there. And so, and different mentorships and different opportunities. And so, that's just me adding context to say, this area in middle school is especially if you're at home, and you go through the appendix, and you'll see that, well, why aren't we talking about middle schools? We are talking about middle schools. When we established our benchmarks, we looked at elementary schools as the priority benchmark in that space. But it is not because we are not looking at middle schools and high schools as well.
Just as a comment, too, about the Whole Child approach and the, the work that we've been doing, bringing it in, starting in the younger ages and moving it up, and now actually the social-emotional learning objectives are in all the schools. And I think the middle school is, is new to it. And so I think that that actually might have some impact, and we might see some improvement in the next, in the next years, since they will have had more kids coming in with previous experience with zones of regulation and some of the, some of the work that you were describing, restorative justice. Will that make a, are we on a trajectory to see some change in a positive direction? Because these kids that are coming up to these ages will have had it and been involved with it longer, and maybe have some more skills in that area?
So the Whole Child framework has multiple pillars to it. And so our middle school leaders would be saying to you, no, we've been dealing in supporting and leading, and we've, we're some of our early adopters with restorative justice practices in there. And so the new components in the last few years has really been that explicit SEL curriculum. And so that is a key component that, in there. The world is dynamic, kids are dynamic in that space. Principal Wilkins, I don't know if you can quote him, this morning, talked about the need to help students respond to the event, and to not, to not be naive to believe that we're going to stop every event. My interpretation of his much more articulated words. And so, you know, curriculum isn't going to stop a child from sometimes making a mistake. There may be a mistake, there may be a trigger, if you will, that causes that, a traumatic event, a stressful event. The curriculum helps support, and how do we respond? How do we recover? And then hopefully gives them some of those skills and that self-regulation to say, I feel this way, what are my strategies? And so I think curriculum's there, but I, I would just, the pillars are extensive, and our middle school folks have been working really hard in this area. Anything else that you'd like to add, Laura?
Good stuff. Anyone else have any comments or questions for the team?
No, a comment. I've seen it inside the classroom, outside the classroom, I've seen it in the community centers. The strategies we're using in Tacoma schools, it's really impacting the community as a whole. I was working with some students from Clover Park District last week, and, but there were two Tacoma kids in the room. It makes a huge difference, because they're kind of leading that conversation, and they're kind of showing those strategies in, in practice. But then also, these are also two students who have been expelled, or, you know, emergency suspended from school. So it's like they're still, they're getting that learning, it's sinking in. And so I'd like to see the, the progress and the growth of our students over time, and like watching some of those seeds blossom from, like the root work from the elementary all the way up. It's really awesome. Thanks for the work you're doing.
If you want to go see one good example, go check out Stafford. We were at Stafford this week, a few of us, and I'll tell you what, those educators were knocking out of the park. There was a little young lady, she was eating her breakfast after the bell, and, and then they were in their circles, and they were doing zones of regulation, and you could see her, like, finish that last bite, like, I got to express, and she hit three of the zones. But what's so impressive is she had a specific reason why she was feeling all three zones in that. And I was thinking to myself, the awareness of her emotions made me pause and say, wow, that is really darn impressive and sophisticated to know that I'm feeling multiple things at once.
Yeah. Anybody else? All right. Well, thank you for, as always, all the hard work you do, and all the work. I just keep looking out at the principals, just saying, you guys just totally rock, every one of you. So another round of applause for our principals, I'm sure. And for all the teachers that are working very hard on the zones of regulation, and on the, you know, restorative justice, and on all the components of the pillars that we have for Whole Child to help our students have a pathway through to, to self-regulation. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President, and if our principals get up and leave right now, it's only because they've had multiple nights out in that space. And as maybe a new principal, and saying, how long do I stay? They may be thinking to themselves, I have another night out, and so I just want to give them permission if they needed to sneak out.
I was still surprised they were still here. So I couldn't, I was wondering what they were waiting for, but...
They're, they're okay either way, but I just want to make sure that...
Superintendent, okay, but does Monty have an update before he leaves?
Thank you, thank you.
I sure do.
Thank you. Monty, would you?
First Creek Eagles.
There was an extremely high-stakes basketball game today, for those at home, between the Baker Bulldogs and the First Creek Eagles. And it appears that the First, First Creek Eagles were...
Victorious.
Victorious. So congratulations to both teams. I know that they were very excited.
Has the demeanor changed?
Yes, yeah. Thank you. Cool.
All righty. Thank you very much for that report. Okay, moving on to number nine, Members of the Public wishing to address the Board. And before I go through the whole discussion here, I'm just wondering, has anyone here filled out a blue card?
We have no written or verbal public comment.
So since we have no written or verbal comments, we can move on to the next item. But just for the public in the future to know that you can, we do really appreciate input, and if you wish to speak at a board meeting or reflect your views to us prior to a board meeting, the instructions on how to do that are on the website. We do take verbal comments in person, or you can write ahead, 24 hours ahead, and get it to the, to a board at tacoma.k12.wa.us, and we will take your input. Thank you very much. So item number 10, the Consent Agenda.
I move to adopt.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions about the consent agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes five to zero. Item 11, Policy Matters. 11.1, First Reading of Revised Policy 6970, Facility Naming.
The General Counsel recommends the Board of Directors review the revised draft proposal for Policy 6970 and provide feedback before second reading.
Okay, thank you, General Counsel. Would you like to give us a little overview about what this new policy, or this policy revision would do?
Yeah, absolutely. So you can see the red line on that second page. The facility, the old facilities renaming policy does a really good job in that first paragraph, setting out that the decision to name or rename district buildings or facilities rests with the school board. The changes that we've made here are to, of course, add the purpose policy that you direct us to add on when we revise or bring up new policies. And then the second section addresses that distinction of roles, for what is a superintendent and staff's role in naming or renaming a school, to clarify what is the board's responsibility, what is staff's responsibility. And then some of the goals that you all shared with us around having a community-focused process and a transparent process are there for sort of guiding principles. There's a regulation that goes along with this, which, upon your passage, if you decide to pass this at the second reading, we can finalize that as well, which has some of the specifics of how we work with community to rename, to rename schools.
Thank you, General Counsel Benro. And just for, but to remind folks here, as well as the public that's listening, that now, after first reading, after we've had a conversation, this version will go to the Equity Policy Review Team, which is meeting next Thursday, and they will review it, give other input, which will be reflected prior to second reading at the meeting in November. Okay? So does anyone have any other comments or questions about this one? All right. Thank you for bringing this forward. We're about to start a marathon of policy reviews, so we're going to be getting used to this on every agenda, so thank you. I'm just wondering if any of our student reps have any questions about that, about how board, about that? Okay, great. All right, so I'm going to close that down, and, lots of agenda. Okay. So moving on to item number 12, Financial Report. The district's next quarterly financial report is planned for next month, November 9th, 2023. If you're interested in looking at financial statements, they can be found on the district's Okay, moving on to Curriculum and Instruction, item number 13. 13.1, is Approval of Contract Number TSD-23-135 Between Youth Marine Foundation and Tacoma Public Schools From September 1, 2023 to August 31, 2024.
The Superintendent, on behalf of the Director of Secondary Education, recommends the Board of Directors approve Contract Number TSD-23-135 Between Youth Marine Foundation and Tacoma Public Schools From September 1, 2023 Through August 31, 2024 For An Estimated Contract Of $91,750 Funding Source: Basic Education Enrichment Budget.
I move to adopt 13.1.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions around this item? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes five zero. Item 13.2, Approval of Contract Number TSD-23-143 Between Elements of Education and Tacoma Public Schools From September 1, 2023 Through August 31, 2024.
The Superintendent, on behalf of the Director of Secondary Education, recommends that the Board of Directors approve Contract Number TSD-23-143 Between Elements of Education and Tacoma Public Schools From September 1, 2023 Through August 31, 2024 Funding Source: Basic Education Partner Schools.
I move to adopt item 13.2.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions on this one? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes five zero. 13.3, Approval of the Interlocal Agreement Number TSD-23-153 Between Bellevue College and Tacoma Public Schools For College and the High School Program For the 2023-2024 School Year.
The Superintendent, on behalf of the Director of Secondary Education, recommends the Board of Directors approve Interlocal Agreement Between Bellevue College and Tacoma Public Schools For College and the High Schools From October 30, 2023 Through June 30, 2024.
Do we have a motion?
I move to adopt 13.3.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions on this one, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions? Any, any nays? All right, passes five zero. Item 13.4, Approval of Contract Number TSD-23-077 Amendment Number Two Between, Between Embrace Learning Institute and Tacoma Public Schools From June 23, 2023 To June 30, 2024.
Before I read this recommendation, I would just like to point out that in the case of items 13.4 and 13.5, the recommendation is to support a contract between Tacoma Public Schools and two entities that would provide very specific and intense support for students who have qualified for special education. And their, their needs are so intense and so specific that they're not able to be provided by Tacoma Public School staff, that the specialty that's needed is nuanced and outside of what we're able to offer. In the case of Brock's Academy, there's one-on-one tutoring that's provided. And with Embrace, it's a non-public agency day school where a student will need services. And I just thought that might be some helpful background information before reading the recommendations. The Deputy Superintendent, on behalf of the Director of Student Services, recommends that the Board of Directors approve Contract Number TSD-23077 Amendment Number Two Between Embrace Learning Institute and Tacoma Public Schools From June 23, 2023 To June 30, 2024 For An Estimated Cost Of $145,000 Funding Source: Student Services.
I move to adopt 13.4.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions for further clarification?
You answered it before I could ask.
Yep, that's great.
Thank you for that.
All right. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. 13.5, Approval of Contract Number TSD-23-112 Amendment Number One Between... 13.5, approval of contract number TSD-23-112, amendment number one, between Brox Academy Services and Tacoma Public Schools from September 1st, 2023 through August 31st, 2024.
The Deputy Superintendent, on behalf of the Director of Student Services, recommends that the Board of Directors approve contract number TSD-23112, amendment number one, between Brox Academy and Tacoma Public Schools from September 1st, 2023 to August 31st, 2024, for an estimated cost of $304,000. Funding source: Student Services.
I move to adopt item 13.5.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further comments or questions on this one? Okay, thank you, Deputy Superintendent, for being so clear. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes five zero. 13.6, approval of contract number TSD-22-064, amendment two, with Mackin Educational Resources.
Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning recommends that the Board of Directors approve contract TSD-22064, amendment number two, with Mackin Educational Resources, in the amount of $100,000, exclusive sale tax for a total contract value of $450,000. Funding source: Curriculum and Instruction.
I'll move to adopt on 13.6.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Does anyone have any comments or questions on this one? Zeke? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes five zero. Thanks, Zeke. 14, business matters. 14.1, approval of contract number TSD-23-056, amendment number one, between RO Health and Tacoma Public Schools, September 1st, 2023 through August 31st, 2024.
In the spirit of providing clarity, in this case, students who have IEPs that dictate one-on-one healthcare needs, this will help our TPS staff be able to provide that by outsourcing and ensuring that we have the talent available to support the student. So with that said, the Deputy Superintendent, on behalf of the Director of Student Services, recommends that the Board of Directors approve contract number TSD-23056, amendment number one, between RO Health and Tacoma Public Schools, September 1st, 2023 to August 31st, 2024, for an estimated cost of $225,000. Funding source: Student Services.
I move to adopt item 14.1.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes five zero. 14.2, approval of bid acceptance for TPS roof upgrade and replacement bundle of multiple facilities.
We will be upgrading roofs at 10 facilities across the district. The Chief Operating Officer recommends that the Board of Directors accept the bid for TPS roof upgrade replacement bundle of multiple facilities from Wayne's Roofing INC. with a budget amount of $5,035,000.
I'll move to adopt item 14.2.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions on this item? Seems pretty straightforward. Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Any abstentions? All right. Passes five zero. Thank you, Chris. 14.3, approval of write-off of uncollectible debt.
The Chief Financial Officer recommends that the Board of Directors write off $65,666.19, excuse me, in outstanding uncollectible debt for facility rentals, payroll overpayments, lost stolen equipment, sub deductions, and district vendor payments after all attempts to collect these resources have been exhausted.
I move to adopt 14.3.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions? All right, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, we have a five zero. Thank you, Roz. All right, other business. 15.1, second reading of resolution number 2130, authorizing the form of the ballot, proposition, and other matters concerning submission to the voters at a special election to be held on February 13th, 2024.
The Chief Financial Officer recommends that the Board of Directors adopt resolution 2130, authorizing the Chief Financial Officer to file the resolution requesting a special election to be held February 13th, 2024, for the issuance of district general obligation bonds in the amount of $650 million to provide funds for capital improvements to facilities of the district.
Do we have a motion?
I move to adopt item 15.1.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Does anyone have any comments or questions about this item?
I think you thoroughly explained it a few times to us.
Right. I was going to say, we have been through this in quite a lot of detail for the public. This is a bond measure to show up from February 13th, to continue to increase our ability to keep our schools safe and improve the quality of our students. All right, this is a resolution, so I am going to ask the General Counsel to read the roll.
President Baumbrügg, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice President Stroger, how do you vote?
Aye.
Director Keating, how do you vote?
Aye.
Director McIlroy, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Director Leon, how do you vote?
Aye.
Resolution passes five zero.
All right, thank you, Roz.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you to the team, too, for all the hard work on this. I know this is a, it's a big deal, so thank you. 15.2, adoption of the 2024 Tacoma Public Schools Legislative Agenda.
Oh, this is me. I keep waiting. It comes from that end. Hold on. The Legislative Representative, which would be me for the board, recommends that the Board of Directors adopt the proposed 2024 Legislative Agenda.
So I move to adopt.
Thank you. Sorry, I also was confused. All right, it's been presented, moved, and seconded, all from the podium. How exciting this is. All right, so I am going to just turn it back to, turn it back to our Legislative Rep, Director Keating, for some explanation of this and discussion.
Sure, I also saw the Superintendent pull his microphone.
I was just going to offer, for those that didn't get a chance, there is a, was a study session last week where we had a chance with our Legislative Rep and our Government and Affairs Agent to walk through that. And so for anybody that has some specific questions around that, they could also watch that online as well, so.
Great. Yeah, thank you. So is anything you wanted to add?
Yeah, I was just going to add that for those that are maybe unfamiliar, that the Legislative Agenda helps guide the board and the Superintendent and his team to advocate local, state, and federally on our priorities, our concerns, and also advocate for solutions towards some of those things. And so it is, I get to do that with the Superintendent and his team, with our local and state government affairs folks, and then our federal team back in DC. And so this allows us to align with our strategic goals and the strategic plan, and then proceed and advocate for the needs of our district and our students.
Perfect. And since we, I was going to also add that we did have that study session last Thursday night. It was extensive, and it was wonderful and informative, and everyone was asked to think about it and get back to Director Keating with any comments that they may have had to augment or in any way change this. And I believe we didn't hear anything, so it is as we discussed it. So it's been moved and seconded, and I will just present, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Any abstentions? Congratulations, we have a Legislative Agenda. Thank you, everyone, because that's going to guide our work next session, so thank you. All right, now comes a particularly fun part of the agenda, which is where we start with our student reps, and we ask you, if you come up to the podium and remind us your name and the school you're with, and tell us a little bit about what's on your mind, what, if you heard anything tonight that was of interest, or if you just want to share things that are going on at your school, whatever, the podium is yours. So Amanda, we'll start with you.
Again, my name is Amanda Peterson. Here's some updates from Lincoln. So next week on Halloween, we're going to be doing a haunted house. Last year, we did this, and we got over $700 within two lunch periods, so within an hour, we got $700. So we have high hopes for this year, too. Two weeks ago, we had homecoming, and that raised over $1,100. We're trying to figure out a good gift that we can give back to the student body. Some ideas that were thrown out there was a canopy for athletes to use when they're going to away games, or maybe like a sound system that we could build into the walls. I don't know, we're like, trying to brainstorm some ideas. Something that ASB just passed was, it's called a job readiness program, so this helps our special needs students get ready for life after high school. So they will be working concession stands during games, which also brings some money to their program. Also, tomorrow is the Superintendent's Breakfast, and two of our clubs will be performing, our Filipino Student Union and our Vietnamese club. Thank you.
Looking forward to that.
No, thank you guys.
Yeah, thanks, Amanda, and welcome back. All right, who wants to go next? Okay, go ahead and come on up.
I wrote down a lot for this, because I had a lot of ideas that came to mind that we talked earlier about in the All-City Senate meeting today. So one of...
You want to reintroduce yourself and say what school you're from? That's okay.
I'm Amelia, and I'm from SOTA. And then, so for SOTA's ASB this year, one of our goals is to do more giving back to the community, because a lot of last year, we focused on earning money, such as like fundraisers and things. So we wanted to give back and have more free events for people who either can't afford it, or just want more events that they can just use to socialize. And then, other events that we've planned are Night Living Bands, Beyond the Grave Dance, which is our new ASB dance, and our showcases. So Night Living Bands. At SOTA, we have majors, we have performing arts majors, such as dance, theater, songwriting, and more. We also have visual arts, such as film, photography, graphic design, and more. But for our songwriting major, we will be having a performance for the bands of our school. Night Living Bands is students in bands who cover different bands that aren't as popular or aren't in their peak of popularity. I'd also like to talk about our showcases. So we adopted a new showcase type. We had our visual arts showcase last year, but they weren't as focused on visual arts. A lot of our showcases are mainly focused on performing arts. All of our ASB are performing arts majors. So we had a new club founded last year called SOTA Art Box, which is just preparing for more visual arts showcases. But we also have our own performing arts showcases, which is just for our students' majors to just be shown and perform and get out there. We also have ASB's first dance of the year coming up, the Beyond the Grave Dance. The theme is that, but it's undead formal, so like, a little spooky. And then, on the topic of giving back to the community, we discovered a new group called the Lunch Bunch, and it's for the special education students of SOTA, our special education's teacher, Zach Hightower, is running that. It's just for a place for the special education students who aren't able to have the socializing groups that they have. So it will be on Mondays, and we'll have like pizza and stuff for students who also would like to join and just talk to the students, and just a place for them to hang out. And then I want to give a shout out to our co-directors, Erin Balesa and Bliss King, for creating a good community at SOTA. Thank you.
That was a lot. First time. Yay, well done. Thanks, Alicia. All right, you're up. Amelia.
I got you.
I'm Lillian. I'm from Silas, I'm a junior. I don't have as much to say sadly, because I'm not in ASB, so I don't have a lot of information like that, but I'll try and get some more for next time. But we just had our first choir concert of the year last night, which was really fun and kind of scary, but it was great. We did a lot of fundraising for Jazz Choir and Show Choir's trip to Disneyland by selling a lot of concessions, and we sold glow sticks for the Show Choir set, which was really fun. And I'll probably try and get numbers on that, because we'll have our first choir council meeting, I believe, next week. We had our homecoming dance a couple weeks ago, which, from my understanding, raised a lot of money for our senior class. I don't have that much to say other than that, so.
No, that's great. First time up. Well done. Thanks, Lillian.
And for all of our, there is no one way to do this.
Yep.
Right? And so make sure that you guys just continue to honor the way that you would like to report out. And so sometimes there will be times where you have less, sometimes you'll have more, sometimes you'll be specific, sometimes you'll be global. You can respond to the agenda items, so make sure you just, what we want to hear from you is your voice and your way.
And thank you again for being here tonight and into the future. We appreciate you. All right, so looking to the dais, who wants to go first?
It's me. It's me. We're going back to this issue.
I'm looking at you. Did you see? I looked straight at you.
That's right.
I understand. I understand the assignment.
Actually, yeah. It gets really fun in here, too. So once you start playing around with it, you're going to notice, there's some people up here who also say much less than you just said. You're doing great. So yeah, I'm going to say a lot, but not a lot. Well, it's probably going to be a lot. Either way, so this is the time of year where things are getting cold, and it's like really difficult out here for a lot of people. So I think just keeping in mind that there are food banks available, and then also TPU has some assistance for your utility payments. Because I think I made a statement the other day, and then my mom was like, "I saw you on the dais, you were talking about your lights being shut off. Did you ever try calling TPU and getting their rental assistance?" I was like, "No, because being an adult is really hard work, and I didn't know what to do." So now I'm telling you, call TPU." Because I did. And your lights don't have to get shut off, they put you on a payment plan. Sometimes it can be as low as $0 per month until they know when you can pay, or it can be up to like $15 to $75, however big your bill is. So also, going on to the community are a bunch of free events, and so when I was growing up, I was not one of those families that like celebrated any holidays. It wasn't weird, it was just a time. And I always wanted to, but then my mom had four kids, so it was really difficult. So how are we going to do all these things on all the sides of town? But now, there's all this money in the city of Tacoma, and there's all these community groups who want to give back, so there's a bunch of events happening, and you can find them all on Facebook, that's what I always do. But let's start with, at our Metro Parks Partners, we have Harvest Fest at People's Center coming up on, there's actually on Halloween Day, on Tuesday. From 4:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m., there's Family Fun. Then from 6:30 to 9:30, we have a Boo Bash Teen Night for middle school and high schoolers. At the Center of Norpoint, on Saturday, they have an event for free for families, 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Then scrolling down, because again, I write a lot of stuff, it's okay. Lincoln District is having a trick-or-treat on Sunday at 1:00 p.m. It's hosted by the Lincoln District Tacoma, Bamboo Tacoma, Burton Gertie's Kid Redo. I don't know what that is, but I'm going to go to Lincoln District and check it out on Sunday. It's free. And then also, Halloween on the Hill 2023 is coming back. It's hosted by these amazing community partners, and the reason I want to call them out is because if you need more resources, please call them, don't call me, I won't know. So Tacoma Community House, the Reach Center, Tacoma Housing Authority, Hilltop Business Association, Community Healthcare, and Hilltop Action Coalition, with over 17 businesses here in Hilltop, and it's free on Saturday, 3:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m., all ages. Over in South Tacoma, on South Tacoma Way, they have their trick-or-treat tomorrow from 3:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. It's being hosted by Theory Real Estate and over 30 South Tacoma Way businesses, and then in the South End, over by Stafford, you piqued my interest, and I was like, "Yeah, what are they doing?" The South End Neighborhood Council is hosting their first annual Hosmer Trunk or Treat, which is huge. It's going to be on 8820 South Hosmer Street, and that's the Hosmer Trunk or Treat. Some things that I was up to, I've been hanging out at the libraries a lot, because that's another free resource, you can get so many things there for free, and I love free stuff. So at the library this past weekend, they had the Tacoma Reads Little Literacy Fest at Wheelock Library, and then they just have a lot of events coming up. If you go to Tacoma Public Library's website, you can find out your local library. A lot of them are on a bus route and kids ride the buses for free and everything in the library is free. Free stuff in our community.
Thank you, that was a lot. Appreciate that, and Halloween themed. Thank you. All right. Director Leon?
Yeah, so recently I was, the Festival Latinx Festival happened a couple of weekends ago, it was well-attended. Lots of art outreach to Latinx community, music, all kinds of really fun things happening. That happens once a year, the other things that occur, that was a big event. Also, last week, UWT hosted a conference and an award ceremony for a lot of Latinx leaders in the community. Just want to mention a few of them. Financial education and leadership around that, Maria Vargas. You can go to their website too, UWT Latinx Leader Celebración, and find some of these names in case the community is interested in following up on some of these issues that some of these folks got awards for. Maria Mora Villapandu for Immigration Rights, which is a big significant issue in the world and our community, of course. It affects our students a lot, so if we can get help for families around that, then our students can be more successful. Vaccine Access with Jose Miguel Rojas, and there are many other leaders that got awards. So it was just, it was a wonderful event and time to celebrate that. I was at Mount T for a recent pep rally and that was a lot of fun. I got to see their volleyball team, their golf team was celebrated, their cheer squad did a great job. And they had an amazing musical chairs competition, which had a lot of people pulling chairs out from under people, but that was okay. Nobody got hurt, but it was very exciting. There was a lot of, they were very, very excited to do that. So, I think that was mainly it for my report.
Okay, thank you. Director Keating?
Sure. I was at, I've lost track, but it was, I went to the Mount T Stadium varsity football game. And it was raining really hard. And I just want to, Mount T won forty-two to seven, so they played an amazing game. And I want to give a shout out to the Mount T Cheer Squad as well, because they stood out in the rain the entire game and did not stop cheering the whole time. They could have come under the, yeah, whatever, shelter, but they did not. And they were amazing and totally energetic. And then at halftime, they had the Homecoming, what are they called, Court was announced. And it was like, it was so cool. It was just a really fun thing. And there were, there was also Alumni Night for T-Birds, so that was really fun. Because they shouted out all the different alums and their names and the years they were there. And they were decades of former Mount T graduates there, so that was a really fun packed event. And I also went to the New Pathways Conference. It was a two-day conference, I went on Thursday and participated.
Want to explain what that is?
Sure, I'll try. So I was about to get to that. So our, it was in partnership with our Tacoma Public Schools and our CTE team. And ours, Adam Koulas and some of his team from Tacoma Online presented around just pathways and career pathways. And so I got to participate in that workshop. And it was really, there were people from actually all over the state and then some people from out of state too. So it was, it was pretty great. And then the other event panel that I attended was also, I was there for TPS the whole time. So Pat Irwin was on a panel with Degrees of Change. And Pat was there to talk about Seeds of Change. And I got to sit with the superintendent from Clover Park and who they are also a new, or not Clover Park, excuse me, Franklin Pierce. They are a new partner similar to, they just started this year, are formalizing their partnership for their own seed teacher program with Degrees of Change and PLU. So it was really fun to just be there and talk with them. And so, and it was fun to just, you know, cheer on our staff. And then I was at the Fossett Grand opening last night, but it was a packed house, so I was in the very back of the room. And I know you did, it's okay. Morris did, I stood back with Morris, so it was good. And so it was just, it's also just great to see our schools filled and people really excited and families excited. And then I've had, I don't know, four, six, like ledge-related meetings, I don't even know. It's a lot, a lot of meetings. And then today during the WASDA networking hour, they actually had a good focus on AI and the impacts of AI in students. And it just gave me a lot of things to think about. Tim Garshaw, the executive director, had us watch a TED Talk, which was a little distracting to watch on a webinar, but it was, there's a lot to think about. And then, so I thought that was particularly interesting. And then I did start my morning before the sun was up with the superintendent and Amanda Scott-Thomas and some of our amazing counselors and family liaison at the St. Leo's, St. Leo's Connect Food Connection at their breakfast fundraiser event. And so that was really special. And, I don't know, I think that's it. Oh no, there's one other thing. So on November first, the Pierce County Community Engagement Task Force, there is a Jobs and Resource Fair happening at the Tacoma Dome. And from everything I've read about it and understand, it's going to be one of the largest job resource fairs that we've had in Pierce County and in Tacoma. So if you know anybody, send them to the Tacoma Dome on November first.
What time, do you know the time? They can look it up.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Everything's on Facebook, right?
Well, I think it's on the Task Force, or the Workforce Central, I think you can find information on Workforce Central's website.
Thank you, that was robust. All right, Vice President's Droger.
Believe it or not, I've been pretty active lately. As of last night, which was not planned, I was phoned by one of our colleagues in the neighboring school district asking me to join on a WASDA call to plan for the Director of Color Council Committee for WASDA. And essentially what that means is it'd be a group of folks that could serve as advisors to the WASDA Board and an advisor to the executive director of the agency. So I tapped in to provide some feedback on some topics. I think we should discuss some things that are important to directors of color in the state, obviously, in the country. So I think when we get to WASDA, there'll be, I mean, I know the Friday that we're at the WASDA conference, we will have our first meeting together and it'll be, it'll be a good time, for sure. One thing I greatly appreciate about being in this role is the ability to just pull up. I was driving past Stewart and I was like, hmm, I haven't been in Stewart in a while, let me just pull up. So I did, used my badge, it worked. I got in, and let me just say that the Stewart staff, first of all, I'm talking about they are creating an environment over there where it doesn't matter who you is, if you walk in that building, you feel welcome. It was great to engage. And then like the students that I saw in the hallway were like, hey, what's up man, I like your hat. I'm like, appreciate it, young man, appreciate it. So it was just, it was just good to spend some time in that building. I popped into a science class, interrupted the whole thing, and didn't mean to. The door was open, I walked in and the teacher walked over and he knew who I was first. Let's talk about how that started first. And he explained to me, my question was simple, it was obviously, it was the day that we were having conferences, so it was a half-day. And he says, I said, how are conferences going? He said, so far, so good. I've met with all of my students' parents. He's like, but if we can get like a ticketed, ticket system, because I kind of lost control of who's here first, who's up next, and it got a little out of control, but we got it together. But just thinking about next time, it'd be great to have like a ticket system or something to help people out. That was awesome. Back in Father's Day this year, I went to my second daddy-daughter dance with my girls. And at this daddy-daughter dance, I met a young man who had his daughter there. She was a little baby, I don't know how old she was, but she was pretty tiny. And I introduced myself and the person I was with, who put the whole thing together, said, oh, he's a school board director. And he's like, oh, you're in the school board? Hey man, if you ever at Stewart. And he yelled out his room number. I couldn't remember his name, so I was concerned, because I was like, man, what's wrong with my memory? But anyway, when I got there, I went to find him. He's like, come check me out at Stewart. Now, he didn't have a class, but when I talked to Mr. Mansia, he is an individual where English is not his first language. But he is the most passionate individual that I have encountered about his work this year. English is not his first language, but he is an English Language Arts teacher. And it is like, it's what fuels him. Like we sat in that classroom and had a conversation for most of his planning period, I apologize for that. He was like, yeah, man, I'm planning, but yeah, let's talk, appreciate you for finding me. So anyway, I'll just say like, it's important for us to have staff in our buildings that like really understand the impact of the work that they're doing. And like, being able to pour into young people is what drives this man. He gets up and he comes to work every single day knowing that he's about to impact somebody's life. If it's one student, if it's two students, if it's all of the students on his roster, he knows that he's doing some impactful work. So anyway, I just want to shout him out, Mr. Mansia over at Stewart. Learned about where you were, pulled up on you a couple of months later, glad I had the opportunity. Finally, I will just say, you guys know that I'm big on winning or being- No, I mean that, I like to win, but it doesn't work here. What I'm trying to say is, consistent in previous years, like 2020, 2021, 2022, and 2023, I want to congratulate you all for being selected again as a Board of Distinction by WASDA. It's exciting, I am pumped about that. And this is, it's an honor to work alongside y'all and do this work for every student every day. That's all I got.
Thank you.
I have a question for Vice President's Droger.
Oh, please.
Okay.
Sir, didn't you have an event that you also did at Mason?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, so I talked about, when I, I think it was last meeting, I talked about the speech that I gave at Mason for Anti-Bullying Month. And I need to go back, because we need to have a conversation about folks pulling on my heartstrings a little bit. But I'll share with y'all that these- I'm excited, I got some reading to do. I'm not doing any homework tonight. But I am going to read all of these hand-drawn handwritten cards from the Mason Mustangs. I appreciate this. I just want to, yeah, I'm going to go back and let them know personally that I appreciate this. But man, this is, sometimes you need this. You guys have been watching these meetings the last few months, the last few weeks. Sometimes it's little things like this that make all of this work worth it. We talked about how there is, you don't get paid for this, right? Sometimes this is the payment, so shout out to the Mason Mustangs.
Can you read your favorite one?
My favorite is in here, and it's something about an Oreo, because they asked for five interesting facts from me before I went up to speak and I shared that. The first one was, I love all things Oreo. So this one says, you are as great as an Oreo. And Director Keating noticed that, they have Lincoln colors on here, because I told him I bleed black and gold. So they paid attention. It's really long, I'm not going to read this to you, because it also might draw some attention to myself that I don't want. So shout out to the Mason Mustangs.
You mean more than I already made just happened?
Correct.
Thank you, Director Keating, that was a wonderful thing to do. All right, well, I will just close it out with a brief discussion of a couple of things. First of all, the last time we met at the board meeting, the next day was JMAC, so of course, I'm going to give you a JMAC update. We talked about summer late nights and did, shared the amazing data on how many kids we served and, you know, all the different locations and the programs that happened at late night. For those of you who don't know what I'm talking about, Tacoma Public Schools and a lot of community partners pulled together with just six weeks from like the end of, the beginning of May, you know, till the end of June or 23rd of June when we, school was out, to pull together to raise 1.4 million dollars and provide at twelve different sites around our community. Some at schools, some at community centers, some at Y's and YMCA's or Boys and Girls Clubs. Places for our youth, middle school and high school youth to go every weeknight from 5:00 PM to 10:00 PM with a hot meal and engaging, you know, opportunities for them to play different games or, you know, do sports or just sit and hang and talk. Or I went a few times around to different ones and there was D&amp;D games going on and that were periodical over weeks. And then there were other things, these kids just pulled together, you know, they just made most of it. And the individuals who came from the different Boys and Girls Clubs or the Y's or the Metro Parks Tacoma who, you know, staffed it were just inspirational for these kids. And I remember I just, my kind of high point was when I talked to one middle schooler. He was actually a raising, a rising sixth grader, so he wasn't quite in middle school yet. And, you know, and he was small and, you know, kind of shy. And the first night when I met him, and when I went back to that same place later in the summer, he was engaged and he was positive and he couldn't wait for school to start because he had met several people, several other students who were already at the school he was going to go to. And he just felt comfortable and welcomed and- So there's many things that we didn't anticipate with the benefits of doing summer late nights. So just so you know, the JMAC community, the folks that are on that are gung-ho about trying to make sure we are able to do this for the next three years. And so we are, you know, everyone's working on raising the money that's necessary to do that. So I wanted to say that was great. They also talked, the other substantive conversation was around sustainability. And Pierce Transit gave an absolutely fabulous presentation about how they are working on, you know, electric buses, but not just that. I mean, all the different components of running a business and trying to figure out how to be sustainable and loving and gentle to Mother Earth. So that was wonderful. And then we had an equity action collaborative conversation about what different groups within the city and county are doing to motivate and move equity forward, and it really, especially around health and access to healthcare and health services, mental health services in particular. So that was, it was a very robust meeting. We already talked about the board study session, which also, aside from the legislative agenda, we also dove really deep into Tacoma Flex. And it was an absolutely informative, fabulous meeting. I think we all learned a great amount and feel very comfortable and thrilled that the program is off and running and doing, you know, good service for our community, so the students in our system. So for those of you who are interested, you know, Dr. Leon unfortunately missed the meetings, but it is recorded. So just say, if folks want to watch it, you can go back and do that by going to the website, to the board meetings, and then just picking the study session. I also was at the opening ceremony for Fossett Elementary last night, which was absolutely fabulous. Ran out of chairs, the room was stuffed, there was standing room only, and there were people from decades before that actually, from the, you know, as far back as the seventies, that were there to support the opening of the new school. And the stories that they were sharing was really interesting about how it used to be and there was a lot of camaraderie. And the best part was, is that during the construction of the new building, the construction team had heard that there was at least one, maybe two time capsules buried somewhere. And so they were very careful while they were digging and, you know, hoeing and doing other things to put the foundation down. They were looking for anything that could possibly be like that. And lo and behold, they actually found one of them. And so that was last night, it was, we were able to share that with the public and it was wild. I mean, it was from 1976 and we found in the thing was a picture of a third grade class. And the names were on, the handwritten names of each student were on the back. And so our incredible intrepid team here at DPS was able to track down three of the girls that were in that photograph. From 1976, they were in third grade, and pulled them together, did a video. And I don't know, do we have that on the website, Tanisha, is that there? Okay, great. So if you can, I don't know where you would go to get it, Fos, is it just on the main website or? Oh, it's on Facebook, okay. Our Facebook page. It's incredible if you watch this video of these women going, opening this and picking out things that they themselves as children put in. And it was magical. So I just want to say it was a wonderful evening. And then the last thing I wanted to say was, this Saturday is the Chinese Reconciliation Walk. And for those of you who've done this in the past, it is really fun. It is, it's great community partnerships, you know, everyone shows up and walks from the Tolliff St. Plaza to the Chinese Reconciliation Park on the waterfront there on Ruston Way. And it starts at 10 o'clock at Tolliff St. Plaza. And there'll be some beginning speeches and then the whole group just walks on down Schuster Parkway. And then there's usually food and some kind of music and entertainment at the other end. So if you are available and want to join in to support our Chinese Reconciliation Walk concept, please join us, because it'll be fun. So that starts at 10. All right, so that's my report for this week. All right, so that's my report for this week and if no one has any last minute things, we'll go through the um announcement of regular board meetings, which is November ninth will be our one meeting in November. Um and then because of Thanksgiving, we aren't having the second one and also that week before, uh we have the WASDA annual conference, which is in Bellevue, so we won't be here that Thursday anyway. Uh December seventh is a board retreat and then we also have one business meeting in December and that'll be December fourteenth, right here, six PM. So that is it for tonight's agenda unless somebody has anything they'd like to, to add. Superintendent, anything to share? Nope, okay. All right, then this meeting is adjourned and we'll see you at the next one.